Good evening, everybody, and welcome to tonight's City of Cedar Falls Regular City Council Meeting for Monday, October 6. I will now call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Schultz.
Here.
Latta.
Here.
Cruz.
Here.
Hallbaker.
Here.
Ganfield.
Present.
Chrisman.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
All members present. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And if ever, excuse me, if everyone is willing and able, could you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, everyone. I'll now look for a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of September 15th. Motion and seconded. Any discussion from council? Seeing none, any from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. And same thing for item number two, to approve the meeting minutes for special meeting for September 29th.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion? And any from the public? All seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Madam Clerk, any agenda revisions?
I have no agenda revisions, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And we will now move to public forum. Speakers will have one opportunity to speak for up to five minutes on topic of its topics relevant to city business. Is there anyone from the public that would wish to speak tonight? And also, if it is an item on the agenda, you can wait for later in the meeting when we get to it, for items not on the agenda tonight. All right, seeing, yep. Just name an address, please.
Good evening. Kim, 2018 Minnetoka, Jordan, Cedar Falls. We just recently opened up 18th Street and we, Main Street intersection. We know that that was $10 million over budget in '23, I believe. '24, we looked at the expense, expenses that were increasing after COVID for construction. I'm here to address, again, First Street and Union Road. I have a concern that I haven't, or the public has not yet, heard back on the original removal cost for the properties there at the northwest intersection, just to know where we're at with that budget. And also, the amount of electrical that had been removed at that intersection by the Cedar Falls Utilities, which is one of our protective barriers. Wagner Road and C-57 is a similar situation and intersection that has had deaths occur. It has been under Mid-American County Board of Supervisors and the county that they considered doing an electrical light system there. Wondering why we didn't look at an electrical light bringing back the flashing yellow or a light system stop-go, especially when we've had at council meeting a potential expansion to housing in the southern part of First Street. We also have two lanes that come out of the ridges to Union Road, so we know at some point that corridor is going to need to be expanded. It's counterintuitive to spend federal money of $500,000 towards a project that we know is going to need additional closures to it. And we have obligation to our surrounding communities of Butler and Bremer County, especially Butler that's coming in from the west. We also have obligations to farmers, and I think that they were not at the table, either one of those two entities, when the meeting was held with Ron Gaines and council member Sires and potentially DOT. We also know, and I believe it's something that you've had a chance to look at, the expansion that's going to be happening on Union Road in our fiscal budgets. So wondering if we can definitely put pause to overspending, look at the budget, get back the electrical, or at least be transparent in knowing how much that cost already has incurred for the removal. That is a very hot corridor. It's a main artery. And it's Cedar Falls First Street is one of our main arteries still coming into the community that does not have a roundabout. We've been proficient on 27th University Avenue. We have gravel road on 12th Street, but yet we have housing that's going to be potentially considered for housing on the south part of 12th, which is going to increase a lot of high-density traffic to Hudson Road and out to Union. Fiscally responsible needs to be something that Cedar Falls addresses. If we looked at 2008, 2009 floods, how much did we spend on affordable housing in North Cedar? That's a huge concern. What would it cost us right now to sell back some of that land to allow houses to be built? People are unable to spend monthly monies for rent in situations, and yet we're spending a lot of federal received monies for projects that are taking away and disrupting the flow of traffic and going over budget. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. There's a lot in there. We have a few items that we can get you some follow-ups on, but one for the transparency piece about the funding for the costs. We can get you the number, but also any of those contracts we would have had to approve here at the council meeting. And those contracts include the expense, the amount, the cost. So that would have been included and done as a public meeting for those expenses, so.
Mayor, I think Director Shraggy had already emailed you the information, so you might feel to just repeat it.
Yeah, I provided some of that information to Ms. Jordan. The contract was under contract with Benton Sand and Gravel for the cost of $77,000 for the demolition of that property. That does not include the acquisition at all, so just the demolition.
Thank you, Director.
And I can follow up with Ms. Jordan on a CEFU-related cost. I do not know that cost.
Okay, thank you. We'll do some follows with the meeting. So, thank you, Ms. Jordan. Anyone else for a public comment this evening? All right, seeing none, we will move to staff updates. And Director Burry, I believe we have one from your side.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Hey, this week is Fire Prevention Week, and so we're going to have an open house on Wednesday night. It's, so it's this Wednesday night, 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. out at the Public Safety Center, 4600 South Main Street. People can park on Blue Bell Road, walk in the big, the big front doors where the fire trucks come out. And there'll be activities for kids, and there'll be food. They can see fire trucks and equipment, fire safety education. And it's going to be sponsored by, there's going to be food from Fairway, Crumble, and Nothing Bunt Cakes. But that's Wednesday night, 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., and a lot of activities for young people.
Are you going to be in the mascot suits?
I will be there. I will not be in the mascot suits.
Okay, fair enough.
It's a real missed opportunity.
All right, thank you, Director. That moves us to Special Order of Business, item number three, Public Hearing on Proposed Amendments to Chapter 26, Zoning of the Code of Ordinances Relative to the Requirement to Obtain a Land Use Permit, to be clarified in a new Section 2626 Application of Provisions and a Retitled Section 2629 Land Use Permit. Do we motion to receive and file proof of publication?
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded. And any discussion from council? Seeing none, any from the public? Seeing all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? This is just for the receiving file proof of publication. Sorry, we'll actually have the public comments for the item itself coming up. Let me see here. And then for our staff comments, actually, do we finalize the vote? Quick, one more time, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. That motion carries. Any written communications, Madam Clerk?
I have no written communications, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And then staff comments, we have Chris Seavey. Thank you, Chris.
Yes, thank you. The land use permit requirement in our code currently is insufficiently and inconsistently defined in the Cedar Falls zoning ordinance. For some development activities that have defined standards, the zoning ordinance states clearly that a land use permit is required, but there are other development activities also for which standards are defined where the zoning ordinance may only imply that a permit is required or expected without clearly stating it. This inconsistency led to a brief council discussion on September 16th, 2024. At least one citizen had expressed some frustration with the difficulty of finding the land use permit requirement in the code and a lack of detail surrounding the requirements such as the application process and fees associated with land use permits. As such, staff is proposing a text amendment to better define the land use permit requirement along with some associated details. Staff worked with the city attorney to determine the language for this code draft, and it is reflective of other permit requirements contained in the Cedar Falls Code of Ordinances. In your packet is a draft of the code language. For brevity, I have a summary of proposed changes up on the screen, which I'll discuss briefly. So the first is to add Section 26-26 Application of Provisions, which is just a statement that is meant to let the public know that the, of the broad application of the zoning ordinance. It's standard language that you typically find in zoning ordinances. For some reason, it has not been in our zoning ordinance. And just for a quick reference here, it says, "No land use shall be established, nor shall any structure be erected, constructed, installed, moved, converted, enlarged, reconstructed, or structurally altered except in conformity with the regulations and standards of this chapter." It also says, "No land use," or sorry, "no land shall be used or altered except in conformity with the regulations and standards of this chapter." Pretty straightforward. So among other items is to replace Section 26-29 Occupancy Permit with 26-29 Land Use Permit. The occupancy permit language actually belongs in different parts of the code other than the zoning ordinance. It applies more specifically to building permits, and it is the Building Department that actually issues the occupancy permits. We do take a little bit of part in that in our administration of the zoning ordinance, but again, it's primarily through building. So other items is to define clearly the land use permit requirement. So we have a specific statement, "A land use permit must be obtained and the appropriate permit fee paid prior to engaging in the following activities impacting land use in the city." And then there are, you know, a listing of those land uses in the proposed language. Other items, define the basic method to obtain a land use permit, define the permit fee, define the basic administrative expectation and procedure when a complete application is received by the city, and then also define the appeal process in the case that, that staff had misapplied or that someone suspects that staff misapplied the standards in the zoning ordinance. So with that being said, the Planning and Zoning Commission met on August 27th, 2025, and with a vote of seven to zero, recommended approval of this case on amendment to the zoning code to clarify the land use permit requirement. And I turn that back to council. If you have any questions, I'm here.
Any questions, clarifying questions at this time from council? All right, seeing none, that will move us to, thank you, Chris, move us to public comments. So if anyone from the public would like to speak tonight? Just name an address, please.
Craig Fairbanks, 405 Spruce Hills Drive, Cedar Falls. As I continue to look through many documents, again, I find this one to have many provisions that I have a question about why you would require it. Number one is paving a driveway, and it also says reconstructing a driveway. Is that what it really means? Does it mean that you want to have a new land use permit for a driveway that's already there? That's question one. Establishing home occupant, occupants, occupation, I have no idea what that is, other than a final building permit. Establishing a temporary use, temporary structure, or temporary storage container. So does that mean that a homeowner who's doing a remodel can't have a pot in their driveway without getting a land use permit? Then it calls on, then it calls on a zoning administrator to issue a permit or finding within 30 days that the application is found. Seems to be a bit long. I mean, most of the time, they're settled on the spot. There's one paragraph that's removed, item C, and I guess I'd want to know why that is, is removed. So if I can get some answers, that would be helpful. The driveway is the, I don't understand why you would need anything on a, on a satellite. That doesn't make any sense to me either, although it's not really a big factor much anymore, but anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fairbanks. We'll circle back to some of these questions after public comment. Anyone else for a public comment this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back to council for a motion to pass an ordinance amending Chapter 26, Zoning of the Code of Ordinances Relative to the Requirement to Obtain a Land Use Permit, to be clarified in a new Section 2626 Application of Provisions and a Retitled Section 2629 Land Use Permit Upon Its First Consideration.
Someone's second.
Motion seconded, and we'll open up for discussion. Director Sheets or Chris, whoever, could you just answer a few of those quick, just some clarification around for a new land use permit, if that, how that would apply to a remodeled driveway, satellite? And then I can just come to the next ones after that.
Yeah, the intent here is really to have a land use permit requirement for anything for which we have standards, standards defined in the code. So in the case of something like a driveway, it is not uncommon for us to have someone come to the planning window with the intent to repave a driveway. Sometimes those driveways are not, the existing driveway is not consistent with the code. And, and so the repaving of a driveway in that case would, would trigger the need to, to, to submit a new plan and have it, you know, have, have a new permit issued in that case, so.
Thank you. Second one was the temporary storage. Could you define what kind of, what kind of qualifies and falls under that?
Yes, you know, and there's, it's, it's kind of broad in the way that it's defined in the zoning code. The, there is a standard that's, if I believe, if I understand correctly, it's 60 days and a 12-month period. Someone can have a temporary storage container. So, you know, if it's a dumpster in their driveway, I understand that, that qualifies in this particular case. Or if it's a pod moving storage type of deal. We've also dealt with it on, on commercial properties where they might have a semi-trailer. So it can, it can vary depending on the situation, but it does require a land use permit. And it's, it's actually, that, that permit requirement is actually defined elsewhere in the code. It's just, we're just restating it here in this part of the code.
Thank you. And you mentioned Section C that was removed. I know we removed a lot of the sections from this. Can you just clarify, because I think some of that was cleanup, because that's covered now by a different section?
Yeah, every, everything here that was crossed out really is covered elsewhere in the code and does not really apply from a zoning standpoint. It applies to, to, more to the building code. So, and it is stated elsewhere in the building code.
And lastly, just the 30-day limit, I, I think to Mr. Fairbanks' point, typically those are done much quicker, but the 30-day limit, is there?
Yes, from a, you know, from a customer service standpoint, we, we usually do it on the spot. It takes five or 10 minutes to pull most land use permits. There are times when, you know, we have more complex situations and questions, and we have to, have to discuss it in a, in a, in a staff meeting or otherwise to kind of really grapple what the intent of the code is. And so we, we try to be as, as accommodating as possible in those cases and not, the, the intent there is, is for the person out the window to not necessarily be a, you know, the heavy-handed person. We want to, want to define exactly, you know, what's the best we can do for this person across the table. And that's, that's the intent there. But I don't, I've never seen it go 30 days to that point, just letting you know.
Okay, thank you. Otherwise, I'll open up to council for any discussion, questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep, go ahead.
I would, I'm a little bit disconcerted on this. I'm wondering what triggered this revision of all these different sections. If I recall correctly, the land use permit discussion was around the fact that we did not define the process to obtain a land use permit, yet we required it for certain things like erecting a shed or for doing a poultry run. So the simplicity of the origination in my mind was define how one gets a land use permit. Now it's turned into an omnibus bill that says you have to have a fee paid for changing your deck or erecting a fence. So now we're charging people for a deck permit and a land use permit? This seems like a fee grab in some regards. So I'm a little bit resistant to all of the things when the initial ask in my mind was just, how does one get a land use permit? So I'd like to understand why it morphed and if I'm missing something in that regard.
Maybe just to help with that, all those things you listed just now, we, we already are charging fees for those, those projects. This is, in a lot of ways, just a formality to, you know, to go with the process that we've, we've already been following. And is already somewhat defined elsewhere in the code. This really just needed to be clarified. Was, was one of the primary issues that came up in that council meeting over a year ago.
So before you.
Hold on, excuse me, councillor. So if I can remember correctly back to that conversation, that was part of it was where this is the practice, and it was partly a concern that we want to make sure what's in the ordinance is matching with our practices has been for a while. And so I think to Mr. Seavey's point, we have been charging those things. It just was never clearly, it was in several sections of the code. It was unclear some places when it applied, when it didn't. So I believe this is just to make sure it's matching current practice. We're not changing any practice. But certainly understand that it was unclear in some of the previous, so it might look like it's being added in.
Well, I mean, in the experience of expanding my deck, I paid for a deck permit, but I was never informed I needed a land use permit. This is changing practice by now charging said homeowner for a land use permit in addition to the compliance with the deck permit. I'm, I'm a little bit miffed that it seems like those that want to follow the rules are being penalized. That's, that's an aside, but it is a new practice. We aren't charging a land use permit in the past to erect a deck or to expand a deck, and this would change that practice. Am I wrong?
Well, see, just personal experience, I just built one earlier this year, and I did pay for the land use permit. So again, I'm not sure all the history of who's paid, who hasn't, but at least from my experience, it's been the practice.
And maybe just to clarify, as far as the building permit for a deck, we, that, that falls under a category of what we call a unified permit. So it is a land use permit and a building permit that is, is unified into one permit. So it, it is, it is a land use permit as well as a building permit and would have been in, at least in the last seven or eight years since we've been on the current system, so.
Thank you.
So before you sit.
Councillor.
Sorry.
Councillor, just make sure you're asking this.
You told me I could go. Wait a minute.
Did I?
Yeah, you did. You go, yeah. Soon as you finish over here.
Go for it, councillor.
So your example, and that, for some clarification, to, Mayor building his deck, and he probably got that combined land use permit. And you made an example of, hey, you got a driveway and you're going to tear it out and replace it same size. Do I need a land use permit and a building permit? Or I only need a land use additional to it if I go another foot wider?
Just a land use permit. The, the building department doesn't have any standards on the width or dimension of a driveway.
Yeah, they do. They got a lot of standards.
Okay, to, to your point, there is a standard on the right-of-way portion of it. So, and that's.
There's lots more than that.
If I'm not, if I'm not replacing the approach and the sidewalk where Daryl is talking about, I'm just doing the, the, from the sidewalk to my, my property.
Correct. If, if there, if it's just from the sidewalk to your property, or I should say, from the property line to your house, that, that only falls under land use permit. And in fact, if, if the building department gets an inquiry on that, they send it right to the planning window.
Okay.
And, and they only deal with us unless there's something happening in the right-of-way as well.
So I'm just clarifying to Mr. Ganfield's point that we're not double charging for a single project.
Right, correct.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, just one more qualification you made. It's, it sounded like you said if a replacement driveway was being sought, to Councilmember Schultz's point, if you just replace the existing driveway where it is, what happens if that existing driveway is no longer compliant? It's a, this land use permit is disallowed, and thus they cannot replace their existing driveway. Is that correct?
Correct. The new driveway would have to follow what the standards, that it would have to follow the standards in the code.
Yeah, I'm struggling how that allows non-conforming use to persist. If you want residents to maintain our city in good repair and keep the concrete in good condition, we're taking from them by saying, hey, if your bump out, to Councilmember Cruz's point, there's a lot of structure around how we can do driveways. So at a bump out, is allowed to park next to your existing driveway width, but it's only allowed within three feet of the property line. If there's one that's been there. If there's one that's been there for 35, 75 years, you now have to get a land use permit that says you can't repair your driveway. Have fun with crumbling driveway and making the city look great. Nobody's going to replace their driveway if they can't replace their driveway. There has to be some non-conforming, like, they bought the house with the driveway, now it's not allowed. We're going to make them tear it out because they asked for permission? Nobody's going to ask us for permission. They're just going to do contracts and not get a permit because we're taking away that. Do you see where I'm going with this?
I'll let Karen jump in, but one second, I just want to make sure. This probably isn't relevant to the land use permit discussion. This is probably a separate discussion relating to how we want to enforce something like a driveway. So, I definitely get that concern. I don't know if it's, I'll go ahead and let Karen just give a quick answer, but I think it's getting a little out of scope.
I would reiterate it's directly applicable because we're inserting new law that makes it a practice. If we don't have this law saying you must get a land use permit before repaving your driveway, then we don't have a problem. We're talking about an acting law that takes away. That's why it's applicable.
Although, again, though, just from my standpoint, is this is the current practice. It's just unclear, and we're clarifying our code. It's not saying it's currently allowed and we're disallowing it. It's just clarifying it to make it clear. So, we're not adding this as a new requirement. It's just clarifying the code to make sure what's currently required.
I would argue that what law does is it defends it. If it's current practice, I don't give two ribs because people can do something different than that. If we make it law, they can no longer because we've said, this is the law of the land. Current practice, I mean, if somebody wants to replace their driveway today, they don't call you for a land use permit. They replace their driveway. That was clarified. Now, they'll have to, and they won't be allowed to. This is a change.
So, let me try to explain. So, the rules are in other places of the code. The rules about driveways are in the driveway section. We already have those rules. Everybody has to follow those right now, whether they, whether we require a land use permit or not. So, the land use permit is there so that people come in, so we try to help them to make sure that what they're doing complies with the rules that are already there. So, it's not new rules. It's just the process for us reviewing it to make sure they follow the rules. And there's provisions in the code for non-conforming situations. So, we have those rules in place already to help to work with people for non-conforming situations. We're not going to take somebody's driveway away if that's the only means of access to their property, for example. So, the rules are somewhere else in the code. This is just to say, come in, and you have to get a land use permit, and that's the process for applying the rules that are already in the code.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may, can you clarify for me what we heard a bit ago? If someone replaces their existing driveway, the current rules in other sections of code say you have to come in and get a permit and a review to make sure you can replace your own driveway?
The other sections of the code say exactly what you can and can't do. So, say, for example, what we're trying to do is prevent somebody from doing something, and then their neighbor complains and says they didn't follow the rules. And then, they've spent a whole bunch of money replacing a driveway, and then we go out and say, yeah, you never came in and got a permit from us, you never checked on us, we would have helped you follow the rules. So, we haven't changed the rules, we've just said, we will help you follow the rules.
So, I'll give you, for instance, on my own property, I have a bump out on my driveway. I'm not talking about access to my own garage or the required driveway. It is a bump out that's been there since I bought the house. It, I don't think, would be allowed under the current building codes, okay? But if I replaced my own concrete currently, I'm not coming to you to get a permit to replace my concrete. I'm calling a construction company, and I'm putting back that exact same driveway that was already there. Now, I will have to call you to review that driveway, and then you will say you can't replace that driveway, you have to shrink it. Is that correct?
So, your contractor should have been checking with the city in the first place to find out if they were following the rules. Everybody has to follow the rules in the code, whether or not a permit is required, and you confirm that with the city attorney. So, whether or not they're checking with us, a lot of people do things without checking with the city, and that's how they get into trouble. So, this is just saying, a land use permit's required, come in and check with the city, we'll help you follow the rules, whether it's a non-conforming situation, we help you work through those situations.
So, can I today replace my own driveway, even though it's non-conforming?
It requires a paving permit, so, which is a land use permit.
That's what I was asking. The rules are you have to get a paving permit for your driveway. We were just told a few minutes ago that there was no check with the city when replacing your driveway. That's why I'm double-checking. So, I would, in that case, have to get a paving permit, and I would be denied my paving permit because my driveway is too wide.
Not necessarily, because there's non-conforming provisions there that we would work through with you to make sure whatever you're trying to do complies with the code. Because we are working all the time in situations where people have things that aren't quite the same as when the code was originally approved. So, it's just a means for us to help people, make sure they're compliant with the code because we have so many situations where people put up a fence, or they put up this, and then we get neighbors complaining, and then we have to tell somebody, guess what? Your fence is too tall, or it's an over-easement. And if you had to come in and check with us and got a permit like you were supposed to, we would have been helped to prevent that extra expense, and now you're going to have to rebuild your fence.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, councillor.
Ms. Howard, you have an interesting way to say this topic here. You're going to help us follow the rules. What you're telling us, telling the citizens, you can't do it that way anymore. So, that you're taking away their privileges of having a legal, non-conforming driveway, bump out, whatever's in the code. You can repair and replace existing things that are non-conforming, correct?
Right.
Okay, the problem I have with this land use permit, even though you say that it's in other parts of the code, it looks to me like you're double-dipping on the citizen. You got a building permit, applicable many of these things here, installing an outdoor swimming pool? Why would you need a land use permit when you already got a building permit? I mean, it unified, whatever, but then what's the cost of both of these? You know, I can't in any way support what we're pushing here. This is too abstract.
This is not an extra fee. These are fees we're already charging. So, for a swimming pool, if you're above-ground swimming pool that doesn't require any electricity, you don't need a building permit. You're just getting a land use permit.
And what's that cost?
The land use permit? $45.
Is there a sliding scale depending on the project? There's a flat fee of $45?
Right.
Okay.
So, a lot of things that are the unified permit, the building department is checking with electricity, all those things about the building structure and making sure it complies with the building code, and they have the sliding fees. With the land use permit, it's a flat fee, and things that we're checking is making sure not, they're not building it over-easement, that they're placing it properly.
When you apply a building permit, you check all those things?
Yes.
Councillor, just try not to interrupt when she's, just try to be cordial back forth.
Right, yeah, we're checking, we work with the building department, and, you know, we got their windows downstairs, and we're, you know, they're coming to us for the land use permit. We're checking to make sure where they're placing it on the lot is proper, and then the building department's checking to make sure the structure is appropriate, if it requires a building permit.
Well, I'll just say I can't in any way support kind of a double-dip oversight here. You're taking away legal, non-conforming situations, and there's no way I'm going to support this, so.
Well, thank you, councillor. I just want to clarify, though, this isn't changing any of the requirements. So, in terms of changing legal, non-conforming, all of that's outlined in other areas of the code.
That's right.
This wouldn't change anything around what's allowed, what's not allowed, what qualifies as legal, non-conforming, doesn't.
Right.
I think to the double-dipping question, though, because I think a lot of times people do think fees and things are just a money grab by the city. One, I will speak from, sorry, it's not a moneymaker for the city. But I do want to clarify that on, there are times it sounds like, well, a building permit or something kind of already does the process of checking that, so maybe a land use permit isn't required. There's times where, like a pool, it is required because there is no building permit to do it. Are there times where you'll be getting both a building permit and a land use permit? And I think that's, just to kind of speak to that question of, are there times where you will get both permits?
And that's already the case. So, for like, for example, for a deck that's a raised deck, there's structural elements to that that the building department's checking to make sure the footings are correct. The land use permit is just to check to make sure it's not encroaching into the setbacks or the easements, and we just have that flat $45 fee to make sure that it's properly located. The building department's checking, and that's already the case.
So, just to clarify, because we were just talking about this, in the past, then, would people have, would it have been checked during their building permit as a part of that? Because it kind of spoke that that's kind of part of that process. Would this be then adding a land use permit process to something like that? Or is it often checked in that building permit, and then this is an additional thing we're putting on?
It's already in the system. So, for example, if you apply online right now for a deck permit, it automatically, we're checking the land use and we're checking the building department. So, it's all one unified fee, and that's already the case.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
One sec, we'll move around and come back.
Ms. Howard, the question regarding the non-conformance is-
This guy.
That guy. Dustin was, I was going to call him Dustin or Mr. Gannfield, but as he was pointing out, he's got the bump out or whatever. I have had citizens that have talked to me before saying, hey, I want to change my driveway. Maybe I have a 20-foot-wide garage, and historically, the driveway went from the corner of the garage to the corner of the garage. Now, when I replace it, I cannot be any wider than the door opening.
Twelve inches.
Right. So, would that fall into the non-conformance and how difficult it is to assess a non-conformance?
You know, you're asking me to speculate on many, many different kinds of cases, and we take each case on a case-by-case basis. A lot of the setback from the neighboring property owner is all about drainage and making sure that isn't draining onto your neighbor's property. So, that's what the three-foot setback is. If somebody comes to us, we already have an exception in the code that allows us to grant the encroachment into that three feet, as long as they're draining it properly so it's not going onto their neighbor's property. So, there's the mechanisms already in the code language that allows us to make some exceptions to the rule for lots of different kinds of situations. The only situation I can think of where it would be required to reduce the width of a driveway would be in the College Hill neighborhood where there's a maximum driveway width of 18 feet. So, that's something that's in the code if somebody's coming in and replacing a driveway. That's the only kind of situation, and usually, that's just at the property line, not at the garage.
Yeah, I was more leaning towards helping you explain that there are non-conformance things.
Right.
And what your process is to get around them. It's just not, yep, you're not getting it.
Right, yeah.
You're just not getting it.
And some neighbors come in and say, we want to have a shared driveway, like, we're okay, my neighbor's okay with this, and we work with them to, you know, have a shared driveway if it's a really constrained site. So, there's just so many different situations in the old, particularly in the older part of town where people have narrow lots and that sort of thing, and we try to work with people on those.
All right, okay. Thank you, councillor. Again, just for discussion, because there's a bunch of rabbit holes, we could go down about what the requirements are on zoning, non-conforming. That really has no bearing on the process of a land use permit. So, just want to kind of help us keep specific to the land use permit process, which is implementing that process and that permit to check what those rules are and is the project conforming to those rules. So, just kind of want to keep us on that discussion for tonight.
Oh, Mr. Mayor? Or anybody else? Dustin?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I guess I'm trying to figure, this is an ordinance change proposed here, so, I mean, we have to cover the scope of the entirety. We can't just talk about the process of the application, right? I misunderstood what your last statement was about.
Well, I mean to say is, this ordinance change doesn't impact at all what is allowed for non-conforming, what's not allowed. So, that's really not pertinent to this conversation about the permit specific to this process. So, just trying to keep us from going down the rabbit hole of discussing zoning requirements and subdivision rules and things when it's specific to just the process of the permit.
Well, I would differ with that again because it is establishing new law. It takes out the subjectivity that Mrs. Howard referenced in the case-by-case basis analysis. Law is there so that there isn't a case-by-case analysis. And this law, as I read it, says, this is now the new norm, unequivocally, this is what you abide by. And so, in that vein, we have to ask what is currently allowed in the current code rules, et cetera. And so, in specific, I would ask, the current process for a pool, we just deliberated for hours on another topic about the height of a fence that was required for a pool of a certain depth, et cetera. This one is very ambiguous. Installing an outdoor swimming pool, you now need a land use permit. If I put a kiddie pool that I purchased out of the yard at Menards that's not even six inches in depth, I have to call you for a land use permit? This is insane overreach. It literally says you must get a land use permit if you're installing an outdoor swimming pool without other definitions. So, I'm like, I'm lost on how this isn't adding in new practice and law.
Just to check quick, I think, is swimming pool a defined word with a definition somewhere else in the code?
Yeah, so, we'd go to the section on swimming pools, and then we would say, no, you don't need it for your kiddie pool, for example. So, we're going to go to the rules in the zoning code to determine what the rules are. This, all this says is a land use permit must be obtained and the fee paid prior to engaging in these activities. So, this is just a list of things that you're required to get a permit for. This is not a listing of the rules.
Mr. Mayor.
Correct, but this, again, think of this from a citizen's perspective, somebody who doesn't work in this day in and day out. Somebody who wants to comply by the rules is going to read this, and they're going to say, oh, I can't install an outdoor swimming pool without applying for the fee, the permit, and paying the fee. To then find out that they've wasted all that time because it's not clear enough for the average Joe citizen to say, you don't need a permit for this. It's the unnecessary complexity there where you have one reference to another section is a problem in all code, I'm sure. But, the practice change here is beyond what it was needed. That's my, that's my resistance to it. Well, last qualification, I would make, a floating deck, is there a building permit required for a floating deck that's not attached to the house currently?
It depends on if it's raised. I don't know the building code requirements, so that's not really relevant to the land use permit part of it. You'd have to get a land use permit for a deck anywhere in your yard because we would check to see where the easements and the setbacks were.
So, that's already existing in code that you need to have a land use permit when you're putting up a floating deck of, say, six inches? That's already in code today?
That's what we're trying to clarify here is that you need a land use permit in, for all these elements that we already have rules for. So, if somebody puts in a floating deck, people do things all the time without permits, right? And what we're trying to say is, we're clarifying that you need a permit for those things, and the reason you need the $45 permit is so that we can check and make sure you're not covering up an easement or getting in the setback.
Just to clarify something you just said, I think it's, if it's listed in here, the intention is, or the assumption is that it has a requirement somewhere else in the code that's causing it to be included here?
Yes.
Okay. Councillor, can I go there? We can come back?
Yeah, go ahead.
Councillor.
Thank you. I think I've kind of, just, you both made my point. This isn't the beginning of the conversation when Mr. Seavey stood up here, is that it started because there was confusion. And so, the point of this is clarification, which, I mean, that's, I think, I get confused. It's like we, don't we want clarification? Don't we want it to be more clear for folks? So, because I think when that conversation had happened, I think there was probably people upset that, oh, we, why, why didn't we make it more clear? So, we're making it more clear. There's nothing new added. It's in a different part of the code. I, super frustrating, and I know I say this all the time, but like, they've done what we've asked them to do. So, thank you.
Thank you, councillor.
Mr. Mayor.
Is there anyone else that hasn't spoken yet?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to call a question.
Okay, so, call the question, and I believe then we need to show a hands, or, excuse me, second, if anybody wants to.
Second.
So, motion seconded for calling the question. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Raise of hands.
Aye and aye.
Show of hands. Or for those online, show a voice. All right, or those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
So Councilman Hawbaker didn't hear anything from you if you said anything online?
He did say something. Hold on. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, I am in favor of calling the question.
So call the question, that's Director Roger, five votes, correct? So call the question passes, five, two. So all those in favor? Oh, excuse me, this is roll call vote for...
For what you do now?
So call the question's been called and passed, so we're moving to roll call for the item.
Vote on the item.
Yep.
Four voting aye, three voting nay, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, that motion carries. That moves us on to item four, public hearing on proposed amendments to Chapter 26, zoning of the Code of Ordinances relative to regulations governing the allowance of accessory dwelling units as outlined in Section 26-142 Accessory Uses, Section 26-193.1 General Provisions, Section 26-193.4 Neighborhood Medium Frontage, Section 26-197 Building Functions, and Section 26-126 Detached Accessory Structures. We have a motion to receive and file proof of application.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, and all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Madam Clerk, any written communications?
I have no written communications, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And again, for staff comments, we have Chris Seavey. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you. On December 16th, 2024, council made a referral to revisit certain standards in the accessory dwelling unit ordinance adopted in November 2024. Then on May 1st, Governor Reynolds signed a new state law, Senate File Number 592, into effect, requiring all jurisdictions to allow ADUs and setting forth additional requirements or restrictions for how we can or cannot handle them in our local ordinance. Council's referral and the new state law were discussed at the May 19th Committee of the whole meeting. At that meeting, council directed staff to begin the process to make changes necessary to bring our ordinance in line with the new state law. So let's talk about the new state law. The new state law requires jurisdictions to allow a minimum of one ADU on the same lot as a single-family residence. This is consistent with how the ordinance is currently written. However, the authority of local jurisdictions is limited. For instance, jurisdictions cannot limit the size to less than 1,000 square feet, even where the principal dwelling is less than 1,000 square feet. Height setbacks, minimum lot sizes, et cetera, cannot be more restrictive than standards applying to the principal dwelling. For instance, the current height standard in most zones for single-family dwellings is 35 feet. So ADUs are allowed to be built to that same standard as per the state law. Jurisdictions cannot require materials and design to match the principal dwelling. No additional parking requirements are permitted. In other words, only the parking required for the principal dwelling may be required. Jurisdictions cannot limit the use of either the house or the ADU as a rental, so no owner occupancy requirement is allowed. And lastly, jurisdictions cannot regulate based on density standards. For instance, limits to the number of total units per acre would not be allowed. Up on the screen is a summary of changes that staff is proposing based on the previous discussions that we've had. So just list them briefly. Delete the owner occupancy requirement. Increase the number of allowed bedrooms to two. Clarify the height requirement to be no taller than allowed for the principal structure as per the underlying zoning district. Delete the design and material standards. Change the egress window requirement for basement units to be one per bedroom. Currently, it's two...yeah, it's two per unit for the basement. Add building addition as one of the forms that an ADU may take. Update utility access language to match the state ordinance. And then similar updates to the downtown code, which has several provisions for ADUs in the different character districts. Since clarification was requested in my presentation of P and Z, in orange are the changes requested by council that are not necessarily required by state law. So increase in the number of allowed bedrooms to two and change in the egress window requirement for basement units to be one per bedroom. So that's just for clarification. Staff also proposes to eliminate the eight-foot separation requirement between structures on a lot, I should say, between accessory structures and principal structures or accessory structures from each other, as defined in Section 26-126 Detached Accessory Structures. This provision has been a common point of contention when discussing with homeowners where they can place a shed or detached structure. Since the building code has standards for spacing between structures to meet fire code requirements, it has been confusing and unnecessary to include a different standard in the zoning ordinance for separation between accessory structures. So all that said, the Planning and Zoning Commission met on August 27, 2025, and with a vote of seven to zero, recommended approval of this case, an amendment to standards applicable to accessory dwelling units to be in compliance with Iowa Senate File 592 and also other revisions as requested by council. And with that, I turn it back to council for discussion.
Thank you, Chris. Any clarifying questions from council at this time? All right, thank you. And seeing none, we'll now open this to public comment, if anyone would like to speak tonight. Just name, please.
Craig Fairbanks. I would like to say thank you, Karen, staff, for bringing these through to completion. I will acknowledge the fact that there are several things that you put in that weren't required by the state. That kind of shocked me, and I was appreciative. But these are discussions that we had at the time, and it's too bad that we can't resolve them then, and we have to go to the state. But I do thank you for putting this through. I think it'll be beneficial to a lot of people this way. And the two-bedroom requirement is a good, is a good part of it. It makes it usable for, especially for single mothers with kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fairbanks. Anyone else for a public comment this evening? Just name, please.
Kim Jordan. I'm still concerned that we have water issues when we go ahead and look at the extra amount of square footage that we're adding to the, let's say, downtown area that may add the standalone unit, whether it's a mother-in-law suite or an ability for a single mother and children to live there. We, in the new subdivisions, have requirements for them to have neighbor, or, I guess, it's permits that have to be refiled to make sure that there is no outside shed that's put within their unit. And yet, on the old section of town, we're saying we can go ahead and expand within that space. And it's not being consistent with the new build and some of those covenants that are put into the place for what they can and cannot do in their housing addition. I think it is more or less, it's an extra fee. I agree that what we were just discussing is adding extra fee, extra time.
Please keep it specific to this item, Ms. Jordan.
But it is part of the whole process. When we go through that change, it's going to open the door for the changes. So waterway, if we can be looking at that, insurance is a big thing because the insurance industry has changed dramatically on what they will do for condo associations, single dwelling, and then the standalone areas. I was just recently in the state of Minnesota in the county assessor's office I had been at, looking at what people can do for outside decks onto their property.
Ms. Jordan, is this relevant to the ADUs? We're no longer discussing the permits and the decking and the things.
Does the ADU apply to, or have you considered, and maybe that's a question for Ms. Howland, the county assessors? And what we're going to be assessing to that property for the square footage and then the water setback? Because those are affecting the stormwater, it's affecting slow seepage, and then there's going to be extra traffic, whether it's an alley or a side street or whatever. So it's one change, but it's multifaceted and it's going to get out of control quickly. So mindful voting, I think. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Director Sheets, just to check quick, I believe any water retention and everything is still reviewed if you're putting up a new ADU and you're building that structure, there's still requirements around the water runoff and like any new home would have?
Well, the detention requirements come into play when you're adding, I think it was 5,000 square feet. So if this ADU is 1,000, then the answer's no.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other public comment for this tonight? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and look for a motion to pass an ordinance amending Chapter 26, zoning of the Code of Ordinances relative to regulations governing the allowance of accessory dwelling units as outlined in Section 26-142 Accessory Uses, Section 26-193.1 General Provisions, Section 26-193.4 Neighborhood Medium Frontage, Section 26-197 Building Functions, and Section 26-126 Detached Accessory Structures upon its first consideration.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, and any discussion from council?
Mr. Mayor. Just a clarification or a comment, and they can verify if I'm correct, but I don't believe there's any driveway requirements for this to add to water runoff problems. Maybe a sidewalk, but I don't know if it's even required for that.
Correct, there are no parking requirements, other than there is a provision for requiring the parking for, that is required for the principal structure to be provided. So in cases where it's not provided and they want to add an ADU, they need to add their parking for the principal structure.
Okay.
Mr. Seavey.
Yes.
Well, I'll let Daryl keep going.
Okay. Then it was mentioned in certain communities where, say, an HOA. How does that stack up against state law? Will it HOA that doesn't allow exterior structures will now be allowed, or will they be forced to allow an ADU?
No. An HOA is allowed to make those restrictions. That's just not something that we, as a jurisdiction, would necessarily be policing.
I was just curious.
That'd be policed by the HOA.
State court, okay, thank you. From council, go ahead.
I've reread this a few times over the past few days, and I think I understand it. But the no additional parking requirements are permitted. In other words, only the parking required for the principal dwelling may be required. That's the state telling the city that if I put a two-bedroom ADU on there, we cannot require two more additional parking spots.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Counselor.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
Mr. Seavey, just while you're up here, thank you for not only matching this up with
what state law is requiring us to do, but also taking the feedback from council from this conversation. So appreciate that you delineated both of those out for us, and this is a great proposal, so thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other discussion, questions from council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
I just want to make a kind of a comment because over this process of, you know, ADU, it started kind of where we had a discussion to allow the ADUs throughout the entire city, not just in the downtown character district, which I supported. We've gotten to this point, and I just want to make sure that I say, my vote is to match up with state law. It doesn't mean that I necessarily agree with these regulations. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other questions, comments, discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
I do think it's worth noting in this one, and P and Z had some discussion on this, that there was some disagreement as to those added in. But at the end of the day, the majority there was to go ahead and add in the recommendations from council, and then that amended, not amended, rather, passed unanimously. So this was also a unanimous recommendation from P and Z. So I think that is good work from those members that had the discussion on it. I appreciate that being added in, and it's good to see those folks working together. I'd like to see that unanimous support in this regard for us as well.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
That motion carries. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item number five, public hearing on proposed amendments to Chapter 26, zoning of the Code of Ordinances relative to parking requirements for studios and one-bedroom apartments in multi-unit buildings as outlined in Section 26-220 Off-Street Parking Spaces and Section 26-181 CHN, College Hill Neighborhood, College Hill Neighborhood Overlay Zoning District. Do we have a motion to receive and file?
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, and all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Madam Clerk, any written communications?
I have no written communications, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And for staff comments, again, Mr. Seavey. Thank you.
I'm back. Hey. The city received an application requesting a text amendment to the zoning code to change the parking requirement for studio apartments in multi-unit developments from two parking spaces per unit to one parking space per unit. The current code can cause some mismatches in parking. For example, code currently requires more parking for studios and one-bedroom apartments on a per-bedroom basis than most single-family houses. Providing more parking than is necessary represents a real cost to the end user. And demographics show a projected increase in one-person households, which will not need the accommodation of two parking spaces. The primary advantage to developers and landlords is the lower cost to build these units. Ultimately, a change to the requirement will promote housing affordability, encourage sustainable living, be proportionally fair to users of smaller units and spaces, adapt to demographic and lifestyle changes, promote efficient land use, and support urban density and walkability. At the August 13th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the commission requested that staff bring forward further analysis of what other cities require for parking. From an analysis of parking requirements for multifamily dwellings for cities in Iowa with population of more than 20,000, here are some facts worth considering. The City of Cedar Falls currently has the highest parking requirement for multifamily at two per unit plus one for each bedroom in excess of two bedrooms, plus one additional stall for every five units in excess of five units for visitor parking. This equates to almost 2.2 spaces per unit for studios and one-bedroom units. Waterloo has the second-highest parking requirement for studios and one-bedroom units at two per unit. For all other cities, assuming no studio apartment is more than 800 square feet, 1.5 spaces is the highest parking requirement for studios, with almost half of cities requiring just one per unit. There's no apparent correlation between city size by population and lower parking requirements. If you see the graphic on the screen, it shows the parking requirement for studios by population size. This graphic shows where Cedar Falls and Waterloo are outliers. The requirement of one parking space per studio apartment is very common regardless of population. Additionally, two cities of interest in this analysis are Waukees and Urbandale, as both are closer to the size of Cedar Falls, 34,000 and 47,000 respectively, almost 48,000 actually. And both require one parking space per bedroom, similar to what the applicant is proposing. Staff reached out to both cities to discuss when their parking requirement was adopted and how it has gone since adoption. Urbandale's standard was adopted in the end of 2024, so fairly recent. Their analysis supported a cap of 2.25 per unit instead of increasing indefinitely with the number of bedrooms. Nothing has been built or approved as of yet under that new requirement in Urbandale. However, Waukees requirement was adopted more than six years ago, and they have seen a sizable amount of multifamily housing built since the change to their code. There have been zero reported parking issues or complaints about parking from citizens and neighborhoods where developments have been built. Both cities also report that developers rarely build the minimum, but will usually build higher than the minimum. For context about the effect that this change could have in Cedar Falls, the most recently approved multifamily development in Cedar Falls is the Cedar West Apartments on the southeast corner of Green Hill Road and Cedar Heights Drive, still pending construction. It was approved in February of 2025. It is a 195-unit development with a total of 315 bedrooms. The approved plans show a mix of studio, one-bedroom, and two-bedroom units. Our current parking requirement calculates 428 parking spaces. So compare that to 315. That makes 113 parking spaces more than there are bedrooms. The proposed change would reduce the parking requirement to 353 parking spaces, still more than there are bedrooms, but sizably lower. Based on, and that's 1.8, that would equate actually to 1.8 spaces per unit based on the mix of apartment types, providing one space per bedroom or studio plus the required visitor parking. We're still maintaining that. That's still a high number compared to what most other cities require, but it is a significant improvement, equating to 18,000 less square feet of pavement needed on the site. However, that doesn't necessarily mean that it would have been green space. It could be more units or otherwise. There's some flexibility there. This analysis is by no means conclusive about whether our overall parking requirements for multifamily residential developments are appropriate. More work is needed to make sure that we are not over-parking residential development sites. This analysis merely illustrates that the singular change to reduce the parking requirement for studios and one-bedroom apartments that the applicant is requesting is reasonable for us to take action on today. This change will create a level playing field for developers seeking to build smaller, more affordable apartments. If you look at the actual changes in your packet, it might seem like a lot is happening, but there are only three basic changes being proposed here. The first is the update to the requirement for multi-unit residential. The second is to match the naming and format conventions of our Use Categories section in Section 26-141, Use Specific Standards. And the last are minor edits to clean up the code. To clean up the code. These are non-substantive changes such as changing parking stall to parking space. With that, the Planning and Zoning Commission met on August 27, 2025, and with a vote of seven to zero, recommended approval of this case, a proposed change to the parking requirement for studios and one-bedroom apartments. With that, I turn it back to council.
Thank you, Mr. Seavey. Any clarifying questions from council at this time?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Good. Mr. Seavey, could you clarify for me, there's a couple of removals of visitor parking requirements, as well as in a disabled person's home, there's some allotment for employee parking. Are those accommodated elsewhere, or are they removed?
Yeah, those are things that were shifted from other positions in the code to make it alphabetical order and, you know, with, to group it with the residential use types that are in the parking code.
Okay. So it's like Sub 14 still accomplishes the visitor parking, I see in here.
Right.
The other one, though, the employee parking, there isn't a requirement I found offhand. That was moved, though, and is still a requirement to provide some employee parking in a, what used to be, it says in the code, the previous was housing for elderly or handicapped. There was a plus-one stall for every two employees. Is that still provided?
Let me double check.
I know, I'm asking you nitty-gritty there.
Yeah.
I have a similar question.
0.75 spaces. So... Yeah, it was something that was normalized into the standard there.
So just for clarification, I'm not seeing it elsewhere. We are removing the requirement for employee parking for those dwellings, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So just to make sure for everyone's understanding, that's a bit of a substantive change then, because we are removing that additional requirement? Or are we intending for that to still be reflected elsewhere?
Oh, we're not intending for that to be reflected elsewhere.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councilor. Yep.
Mr. Seavey, do we have a, or what is the definition for a studio apartment in Cedar Falls? Is there a size limit, square footage?
No, there's not a size limit.
So it could be 400, it could be 1,000.
Correct.
So is there a differentiation then in the code between a studio and a one-bedroom?
The one-bedroom would have a wall separation with a door.
For privacy.
Correct.
Okay. But no square footage?
No.
Could have 2,000 square foot, single unit.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, councilor. Any other clarifying questions from council?
Mr. Seavey, on your presentation, thanks, by the way, you're doing a lot of work tonight, Chris, getting out here. The comment you made that if we reduce the number of parking spots, they would open it up for not necessarily green space and not necessarily other things, but potentially to build more of the complex. Does that defeat the purpose of reducing the spots that we add more bedrooms? Or you readjust then from that?
I should say staff has no goal in this particular instance. I think it does change the development potential. There can be some positives to that, increasing the tax revenue from a property with the additional building or what have you, so. But again, there's no real stance from staff on that, whether that's green space or otherwise, that we would leave that up to the developer. Ultimately, this would come down to supporting a lower cost of development for apartment units that are one-bedroom or studio.
I was just wondering if that was part of the conversation. I wasn't looking for you to give any details on that.
That's fair.
On your comment too, that, and I have found this to be the case, that the developer knows what their demand is, and they want to sell what their product is. So oftentimes, there is a tendency that if it's the requirement in Waukees to have one bedroom or one spot, that they'll build two. They'll overbuild to accommodate the demand for their product, right? Hey, I don't want to buy your place. I got nowhere to park. My wife and I are going to be living here, so. Is that what you found in your research?
Yes, absolutely. And it's context sensitive, too. You know, you might have developers that know they need two per unit in one area of town and another area of town. They might understand that one per unit is, you know, or one per bedroom, or whatever the, whatever that. A balance that we are giving them, if this is changed, would give them the ability to match what they analyze the market needing. So.
Yeah. I don't want to, you know, I don't want to get off topic, Mr. Mayor.
We are still on clarifying questions, so.
We're just clarifying questions, so I won't. Okay.
Thank you, councilor. Any other clarifying questions from council? All right. Seeing none, thank you, Chris, and we'll move to public comment. Would anyone like to speak on this item tonight? All right. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and move to look for a motion to pass an ordinance amending Chapter 26, zoning of the Code of Ordinances relative to parking requirements for studios and one-bedroom apartments in multi-unit buildings as outlined in Section 26, 220, off-street parking spaces, and Section 26, 181, College Hill Neighborhood Overlay Zoning District upon its first consideration.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded and open to discussion from council.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep, go ahead.
Just great job, Mr. Seavey, with your presentation. Appreciate the specifics, especially when we think about that Cedar West project. Now, we've spent a lot of time talking about ways that we could potentially reduce costs for developers. This seems like a big win in that regard, especially looking at the number of spots that we could potentially reduce by making this amendment. I think this is great. I think this actually represents a lot of the feedback we've had from citizens and developers. So I think this is a great step forward, so I think very much in support of this move. Thank you.
Thank you, councilor. Yep, go ahead.
Thank you. Thanks, Chris. Appreciate it. Doing a good job. Some things that I noticed when I studied these numbers, I agree we over-require parking in Cedar Falls. But as I study this, I kind of keyed in on the Bettendorf and Corville using square footage, and kind of along the lines of my question earlier about what is the minimum or maximum for a studio, and then a one-bedroom size limit. If we look at these communities, and I had to Google the populations of Iowa City, Ames, Dubuque, college towns, I look at the chart and I see that they all have one and a half units, spaces per unit in a college town. Then, as I was looking at the studio size, Corville doesn't specify studio. They're saying 1.5 spaces per unit with less than 800 square feet, two spaces greater. I think I would like to look at the approach for Cedar Falls to say that the studio apartments that are under, say, 600 feet would have one required, which is kind of what we're seeing here now. But if you're over 600 feet, you need one and a half, which would match up with what the college towns are doing. If anybody has done any rental, renting of apartments in Cedar Falls near a college, you know that the kids will pack in as many people as they can into a place. I have often, over the years, had a boyfriend-girlfriend want to rent one room and live together in one bedroom of a four-bedroom, and only pay rent for one. So I think if we get away from saying how many bedrooms and go to a square footage, I think that we would adequately avoid developers playing around with the size of a studio. Whether you put a wall and a door for privacy inside of a room, you could better quantify the parking that you need. So I'd like to make a friendly amendment to consider using square footage for a studio 600 feet and under for one person, one parking spot. Over that, one bedroom would be one and a half spots, in line with the other college towns and many of the other cities. Consider that for discussion.
Thank you, councilor. And quick, because we kind of talked through some of the discussion, how this would work, because, one, I'm guessing staff would really like the chance to actually, if we're going to amend it, just make sure all the ordinances are written correctly. So we'd probably, if there's a different direction we'd like to go with this, either reviewing different number per unit, looking at it based on square footage, we'd most likely want to vote this down with that direction to take it back to P&amp;Z, because ultimately, any changes on it would have to go back to P&amp;Z for review. So we would want to vote it down with that direction to staff to take some specific changes back to planning and zoning for review. So we wouldn't necessarily amend this on the spot, but that's kind of how I would say you'd want to do that, is if that's a discussion the group wants to have, let's have that. And then if that's the direction you want to go, it would be saying, well, let's vote this down at this time with that direction back to staff and planning and zoning to review it differently.
Do I make a motion to have it go back, or what do you?
At this point, Trey Rogers, I don't think we need any motion. We'll just keep going on discussion if that's a direction we want to go. And if it is, then I would direct everyone to vote no if they'd like to send it back.
Right. No motion at this time is necessary, but I've heard an argument possibly for no vote if we want to take that route.
Well, I guess to clarify then, as this stands right now, I would vote no in lieu of a better solution, quote, better, a different solution, as has been instigated in Bettendorf, Corville, and probably other communities across the country, to square footage. Because a 2,000-square-foot, single-family, single-family.
Studio?
One-bedroom, 2,000-square-foot, one-bedroom place could have three people living in it. So square footage, to me, seems like the better, a more logical way to go with dictating parking stalls required.
Okay. Thank you, councilor.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
I'm just going to kind of probably repeat what Councilman Latta said, but some of the things that I heard when Mr. Seavey spoke is, first of all, I mean, I appreciate the comparison to Waukees and Urbendale, specifically Waukees, because I think we, most of us know that's a, you know, rapidly growing city, and so they could speak to whether or not this has been a problem for them or not, and so I appreciate him having that information in there. We often talk about, you know, obviously, we know housing is an issue. Housing that folks can afford is an issue not only here in Cedar Falls, but all over the state and the country. So anything to help make that more affordable, and we've talked before about how parking requirements can drive up the cost of development. So I heard during the presentation that this could help make this more affordable, not only for the developer, but hopefully, in turn, that passes on to the folks that actually live in the building when it's built. And then oftentimes, you know, we hear, well, you're heavy-handed on the developer. Well, I hear, you know, this isn't saying that the developer can't build. If they want to have five parking spaces for their studio apartment, they can do that, but we're only requiring one. And then the other thing that I kind of think of is, you know, people, especially young people, are not living the way that we did, you know, maybe even 10 years ago, but certainly not the 30 years ago when I was a college kid, or, you know, and it's not just college kids that live in studio apartments. I mean, it's all across the board as far as ages. And so, again, I guess what I'm getting at is I appreciate that we've lessened our hold on what we require and put it back into the hands of the person who is developing and building the building. If they wish to do more, or they know what their target audience is for their building, then they can do that. But hopefully, this will help whittle away, you know, and have more spaces where people can afford to live, because that's a problem that's not getting any better. So I appreciate the work, and I'm certainly supportive of this.
Thank you, councilor. Any other further discussion from council? Counselor?
I'm really excited about this. I think this is going to be great for College Hill. I'm going to say something crazy, but I'd love to see no parking requirements. But I know that's not a high priority for everyone, so I'll hold back for now, but could see that coming from me. Thank you.
Thank you, councilor. Any other discussion, thoughts?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I was, yeah, I was looking at the same things that Daryl was looking at on square footage of studios, but I'm also in the camp of wanting to get this moving, and I'd hate to send it all the way back and do all the rework that the staff has already put into this, so. I am, I'm not supportive of zero. I'm not to where Anna is yet, but I think we got a good plan here.
Thank you, councilor. Any other discussion, thoughts from council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
I just wanted to throw out a comment here that Urbendale and Waukees, with their new ordinances, neither one of those are a college town. So there wouldn't be this big demand to economize in housing. College students are maybe some of the poorest rental population out there, and coming right out of high school with minimal income. And it's very, very common to have a boyfriend-girlfriend renting, would be renting a one-bedroom, and they'll have cars in our community. So to have no parking, that's just not feasible whatsoever. I do, you know, with Counselor Schultz saying that, sending it back, but I'm always the person who wants to do it correctly the first time, and redoing this would not take that much, wouldn't be that difficult to redo it. I mean, it's, we need to reduce, certainly, but just to say one for both a one-bedroom and a studio, I think you're going to have problems with the parking. Thank you.
Thank you, councilor.
Just to clarify, to Daryl's point, that I'm not looking to not send it back, just to get it moved on. I think in the consideration of the conversation we're having, we are appropriate on our parking, not to zero, but we are appropriate to our parking with this.
Okay. Thank you, councilor. Any other further discussion, thoughts? All right. Seeing none, roll call vote, and just so everyone knows, I'll take it as yes is obviously a yes for this current one. It didn't seem like anyone was a no-no change, so a no to me would mean I'll ask a follow-up question if you're looking for some other direction, but roll call vote, please.
Six voting aye, one voting nay, Mr. Mayor.
The motion carries. Thank you. And that moves us to item six, Old Business, further continuance of a public hearing to October 20, 2025, on proposed amendments to Chapter 7, Buildings and Building Regulations of the Code of Ordinances Relative to Amendments, National Electrical Code Adoption and National Electrical Code Amendments. Quick, just clarification, this is because we had moved the public hearing, but we're also now, based on having the committee discussion, moving it to the next meeting, so it's a vote for that. So we do have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
And any discussion from council? Seeing none, any from the public? Also seeing none, roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The motion carries. Item number seven, pass ordinance number 3123, amending Chapter 17, nuisances of the Code of Ordinances relative to nuisance defined, certain acts, conditions declared as nuisances, and responsibility for abatement, abatement defined upon its third and final consideration. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion from council? Seeing none, any from the public? Also seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
Six voting aye, one voting nay, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The motion carries. Item number eight, pass ordinance number 3124, amending Chapter 7- Item number eight, pass ordinance number three-one-two-four, amending chapter seventeen of the Code of Ordinances relative to traffic regulations and chapter twenty-three of the Code of Ordinances relative to definitions, all-terrain vehicles and off-road utility vehicles, street or highway operation and operation of off-road utility vehicles, UTVs, undesignated streets upon its third and final consideration. Motion to approve?
Approved.
Seconded.
And any discussion from council? Seeing none, any from the public? Also seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The motion carries. That moves us to the consent calendar. The following items will be acted upon by a voice vote on a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the public or council requests that it be considered. Are there any requests from council? And seeing none, any from the public? Also seeing none, I'll look for a motion to approve items nine through thirteen of the consent calendar.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion seconded and all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Moves us to the resolution calendar. The following items will be acted upon by a roll call vote on a single motion without separate discussion unless someone calls it out separately, so any from council?
Number fifteen?
Thank you. Any others from council? Seeing none, any from the public? All right, also seeing none, I'll look for a motion to approve item fourteen through, so many, fifty, of the resolution calendar excluding item number fifteen.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion seconded and roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The motion carries, and that brings us to item fifteen, Resolution Approving the Recommendation and Appointing of the UNI Student Liaison to the Cedar Falls City Council. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion and seconded, and I was going to pull it too, but I'll let you if you would like to.
I just think this is an important role on our council. The University of Northern Iowa is important to Cedar Falls, and we want Cedar Falls to be important to them. So I just want to thank Ms. Benton for putting herself out there and be willing to serve in this role. I think it's important for us to, you know, it's not just a sitting up here. I appreciate when we have young folks that are willing to speak up and let us know how the students feel about a particular topic so that we can better serve our student population, not only at the university, but hopefully in turn they'll consider staying here forever. So anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, counselor. And if council's all right with it, I asked DeeDee if she'd like to come up and introduce herself quick.
Absolutely.
I mean, we could do it public comment, but that way they can publicly comment on it too. Ms. Benton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hello, my name is DeeDee Benton. I am a lifelong Cedar Falls resident of twenty years. I lived just up the road in North Cedar, right next to the brown bottle, which I love to go, as Merrill Haddock knows. I graduated from Cedar Falls High School in 2023, and I am now a junior attending the University of Northern Iowa. And I joined the Northern Iowa Student Government in order to do this role because I think it's really important for students to be connected with the city and its culture, as I have loved it all my life, and I think it's very important for the city to be also connected with the university, as I believe it brings new life to our city. And yeah, I am very excited to be working with you all.
Thank you, Ms. Benton.
Thank you.
Any other questions, thoughts from council before we move to public comment? All right, seeing none, is there any public comment on this item tonight? All right, also seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor?
The motion carries. Thank you again, Ms. Benton, and looking forward to having you open the chair next time. All right, that moves us to multiple pages, Allowing Bills and Claims. We have a motion to allow bills and claims for October sixth.
Seconded.
Motion seconded, any discussion from council? Seeing none, any from the public? Also seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The motion carries. Any council updates or announcements? Seeing none, we did not have any written referrals, any pressing referrals? Also seeing none, I will look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. And to our UNI class who is here as well, thank you for coming out for your second visit.